Okay, Mr. McCoslin, are you ready? I'd like to call this meeting into order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation's ground and is the home of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCoslin, would you please call roll?
Mrs. Feis. Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppe. Mrs. Janisak.
Here.
Mr. McGregor. Mr. Modrak.
Thank you, sir. I am here.
Mr. Scalzo.
I'm here.
Mrs. Turner. Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Eight members present.
And I apologize for not noticing that one person was missing. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business purposes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is made by Ms. Scalzo, seconded by Mrs. Hoppe.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the 6:14, 2022, 6:28, 2022, and 7:12, 2022 meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Ms. Turner, seconded by Mrs. Scalzo.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to announce the executive sessions that we held on July 12, 2022, for Personnel, Other Legal Matters, and Receive Information; August 2, 2022, for Personnel, Other Legal Matters, and Receive Information; and August 23, 2022, for Personnel, Other Legal Matters, and Receive Information. We can get to the additional committee reports. Anybody from student government here? Probably not, since it's not started yet. Probably not PTO, PTA either.
No, not yet.
Solicitor report.
I just wanted to draw the board's attention to a few items that are legal resolutions on the agenda. There's an employee resolution under D-12. There are several resolutions connected with the Steel Center renovation project, which I had discussed at, I believe, the planning meeting earlier this month. There are three agenda items connected with that process, which I would be happy to answer any questions about. They simply authorize the lease that will be connected with financial bonds that will fund the renovation project. And also, there is a resolution which the board has to approve that appoints a member to the Steel Valley Authority. All of the financing for the project is being funneled through the Steel Valley Authority, which was created many, many years ago and is being revived for this particular project. So you will have to appoint someone. It can be a board member. It could be, for instance, the same board member who goes to Steel Center's meetings, Ms. Hoppe, or it could be somebody from the community who has experience with Steel Center in the past. So those are three items. And then there's also a resolution relating to subdivision of district property connected to a stormwater project at Peter Page Park. But beyond that, no formal report, but I will wish everybody in the district a good and positive start to the school year.
So do we need to, for the Steel Center or Steel Valley representative, do we need to appoint that person tonight? And do we vote on that person, or?
I would recommend that you do that tonight if you're prepared to do that. However, you have an opportunity, since you have several meetings scheduled in September, to appoint that person at a September meeting if you cannot decide upon the person tonight. The Steel Center has stated that all joint-year districts have to approve the resolutions and appoint somebody by the end of September. So you're well within your timeline.
Okay, but just to get it taken care of. Ms. Hoppe, you're already a member or representative. Are you interested in being the representative on this committee also? So when we get to that item, that's under Finance?
It is. It's Finance, number seven. I'm assuming that will require an amendment at that point, or will we simply be able to insert the necessary name?
I would recommend for this, since it's unanimous, that you insert the individual's name. The public has had noticed that there will be somebody appointed to the position, and they've been given an opportunity to comment on that should they wish to.
Okay, thank you.
Just read Ms. Hoppe's name when you make the motion, and maybe call out that one separately, since we just keep it as a separate motion.
Okay.
Okay. Superintendent's, oh, I'm sorry, committee reports. Anything, any updates from other committees going on? Steel Center, Pathfinders? Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back for another, what looks to be another great school year. I'll start as we typically do at the business meeting and share with the board a little bit of background for the candidates who are up for retirement approval on the agenda tonight. There are three employees who have submitted their intentions to retire. Dari Duragon is intending to retire in June. She started in 1994 as a life skills teacher at IMS. In June of 99, she moved from IMS to Neil Armstrong Middle School and taught sixth grade reading. And then in 2008, she took on the job of IST teacher at Neil Armstrong. And then again, in July of 2012, she transferred to fifth grade teacher. And the last couple of years, including her last year, she's been teaching sixth grade at Neil Armstrong. Anna Scott, in February of 2002, started as a substitute paraprofessional aide. She was approved in September of 2002 as a half-time special ed paraprofessional aide at Memorial. In August of 2004, she moved to part-time special ed at Ben Franklin Elementary, and then transferred in 2005 to Neil Armstrong, where she became a full-time paraprofessional. In November of 2006, she moved from Neil to the high school, and that's where her current role is, as a full-time special education paraprofessional, when she retires here in September. And Bill Blasis started with the district in August of 2016 as a substitute bus driver. In September, just a few weeks later, he was made full-time bus driver, and he will retire from that position this year. In addition to those updates, I also placed at the board's tables here tonight a copy of a section of our strategic plan balanced scorecard to review with the board, an update for the community. The entirety of the balanced scorecard is on our website, and it's sort of a living document that is updated fairly regularly with progress on each of those 17 goals and multiple action steps for each goal. Tonight's focus is on the HR, the Human Resources and Personnel section. There were three goals that this committee had developed for the HR focus of the district. Of course, this was an important group because this is a people business in education, and we have a great number of important people that help move this district forward. The first piece on the goal was to look at the staffing, current staffing, and to make sure that we have a long-range plan for how the staffing can be maximized as the district consolidates and moves forward with our building projects. The second goal was talking about employee wellness and employee respect and connectivity and professional development. That there is just a little bit of progress there. The good news, I think, is that we do have a wellness committee in place that has been meeting quarterly for the last year and has a lot of ambitious goals in mind to support the well-being of our teachers, staff, support staff, and administrators, and so forth. And finally, the third goal is relative to professional development. And we used this expression earlier in the week with our teachers, and kind of become one of my common pet phrases is that we have a lot of great teachers in Bethel Park, but there's also opportunity, always opportunity, for us to get better. And so our responsibility as administrators and through this strategic plan, we want to start polishing those diamonds and helping everybody reach their next best. So there's a lot in that section of the strategic plan related to professional development, teacher training, coaching, et cetera. Probably the most progress really is with the staff planning and with the professional development. Wellness is still an ongoing piece. I'm sure a year from now, we'll be bragging about a lot of the accomplishments of the wellness program. I'd like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Cromie, who's working remotely tonight because of illness, and he wants to talk about his five big things for the start of the year.
Hey, guys. How's it? Great. We're going to start with our five big things. As you know, there's always many more than five wonderful things happening in Bethel Park, but we had to pick five. We had limited the five, so we're going to start with slide number one. It's our first day of school. It's BP Day One. The '22-'23 school year begins this Thursday, and we are excited to share in everyone's experience. Whether you are sending your child off to school for the first time ever, or if this is an old routine by now, we want to see and share your photos. Simply include the hashtag #BPDayOne along with your child's first and last name, grade level, school, and any message you wish to include, and we will do our best to boost your signal and your spirits. And it's something we did last year for the first time, and I think we had a lot of success with it. It was really fun. It was really exciting to see people kind of sending their child off to school for the first time, and we're excited to do it again this year. For our second slide, speaking of welcoming new people, we welcomed some new teachers last week when Bethel Park had its teacher induction program. The new teachers had the opportunity to meet and learn from existing staff members and administrators, and go over a number of role-playing exercises to help prepare them for their new jobs. The teachers also had the opportunity to meet their professional mentors, who will play a key role in helping them acclimate to the school district. I was fortunate enough to participate in that, and I was very impressed with the questions that we were getting and the experience level of the teachers we were bringing in. All of them have taught at previous schools, which I think is a really great benefit for Bethel Park. Our third slide tonight is about the new traffic patterns at Bethel Park High School. The start of the new school year will also bring some new traffic patterns during the student drop-off times. Remember, this only affects the drop-off times, not the afternoon. And the changes, which are the result of student-parent feedback, as well as a traffic study, are designed to make the campus feel less congested and also safer for all BPHS students. Last year, for example, most of the traffic was diverted into the student parking lot, and that led to a few closed calls. So we did a good job, I think, of identifying those problems and finding ways to make the process safer and more convenient. So this year, parents who are dropping off their student will be able to go down, if they come up Broad Street, they'll be able to go down to the circle, drop off their student right in front of the school, and then make their way back out down Broad Street. There are also changes at the YMCA lot and at the Perky Field lot. So I think we will see a big benefit in ingress egress, and I think you'll see a big benefit in student safety as well. Our next slide is actually from today. Shawn Rovers, earlier today, he donated $2,820 to UPMC Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh on behalf of his nonprofit organization, Smiles for Shawn. All of that money is collected through coin donations of the Bethel Park community. So this is really a Bethel Park achievement, as much as it is a Smiles for Shawn achievement, and we're very proud of it. Shawn, who continues to battle a rare pediatric brain cancer, a type of central nervous system sarcoma, he founded Smiles for Shawn in an effort to bring happiness and smiles to others who are going through a similarly difficult period in their life. And we're very proud of that organization and all that they've managed. They have raised so much money. It's been fabulous, the difference they've made. And Bethel Park as a community, the way they've responded to Smiles for Shawn has been consistently remarkable. And our last one for tonight is something we're really excited, it actually doesn't start until the winter, but we learned over the last few weeks that this winter, Bethel Park will add a new sport for the first time in decades, when it adds co-ed unified indoor bocce to its athletic arsenal. The Special Olympics of Pennsylvania oversees the fully-inclusive program, which brings students with intellectual and developmental disabilities, including autism, together with students without disabilities on the interscholastic united sports team. The members represent their school like any other PIAA sports team, competing and practicing together as equal peers, and they even earn varsity letters. And I know, I can tell you that I worked, that I was able to, at a previous stop, we had one of those teams, and it's one of the best stories that you cover in a year. It's really remarkable to see how the community responds to it, and to see that our students, all of our students feeling included is something that is, it's just awesome. It's something that's really exciting. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cromie. And last piece on my part of the agenda is our update from our curriculum department. We'll reserve opportunity to jump in during the personnel section of tonight's agenda and introduce some people to the board.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you the bright spots in Bethel Park for August. This session of bright spots, we are calling this the back-to-school, behind-the-scenes edition. And so we're going to highlight some of the things that have been happening throughout the summer months to ensure that we are prepared and ready to go back to school for the '22-'23 school year. One of the things that we've been working on is the returning student process. And so COVID forced us to automate some of our processes and to start to go paperless, and we started that with an online registration system for new students and found that the Home Access Center can house pretty much all of a student and family's information in one place. And so over the course of the past two years, Mr. Minch, myself, and Mr. Wexel have been working on trying to get that process as automated and in one location as possible. And so this year, you should have received, starting the second week of August, automated emails asking you to complete your returning student process. And this is for all students, and this is where, when you log into the Home Access Center, the information is there, and it populates from what you already put in there. So this avoids you filling out multiple sheets and office cards and medical cards for multiple students each year. And so the information is there. You do need to update the medical information each year, whether your child can have Tylenol or Ibuprofen or cough drops. That will be a yearly ask of you. You can update your information on your emergency contacts. So if we would have to contact you and release your child, who your child can be released to. So it's really important that this information is updated on a yearly basis. You will receive two emails from us on Monday and Thursdays for as long as the time takes for you to complete this information. It's not to hound you. Again, it's just to get all of that critical information that we need in case we would need to contact you or there would be an issue with your child. New this year, we are going to have the bus information in hack. So again, we are trying to get everything one-stop shopping for you, so you have all of the information in one place. So if you have any questions, please reach out to us, and there is a place on our website where you can access the Home Access Center and get the help and support that you need. We also wanted to highlight new teacher induction. We had the opportunity, this was Dr. Jan Sante did an activity with our new teachers to get them into the BP spirit, and we all had an opportunity to welcome the new teachers, to sit down with them and get some information about them and share some expertise and some things that we do here at Bethel Park. So again, we welcome all of the new teachers to Bethel Park for the '22-'23 school year. This year, under the new teacher's contract, we had a new event called the Summer Facilitators Retreat. And so we added elementary facilitators this year to our already very strong group of grade five to 12 facilitators. So we added an elementary ELA facilitator, special education, math, science, and social studies. And so we brought this group of approximately 30 facilitators, teacher leaders who have applied for these positions to lead their colleagues and to be a support to the principals and the administration staff, and of course, the teaching staff for their departments. We brought them all in in the summer and had our first-ever retreat day, where we worked on team building, we worked on the goals, reviewing the strategic plan, and the roles in in-service, because in-service is a daunting task that we could not do alone without the help and support of the teachers. Which brings us to our convocation led by Dr. Walsh, and he brought some real excitement this year and a great family.
It was a slingshot issue, I believe.
Maybe, maybe. And we played Family Feud with the teachers versus the administrators. He gave away, everyone loves a free t-shirt. That is the way to market, so he gave away some free t-shirts, and he really welcomed everyone. There was a lot of spirit and enthusiasm for this upcoming year. So that was a great start.
It was a tough act to follow, for sure. And just for the record, in that picture, we launched it all the way to the top of the auditorium. It was our best launch.
Not saying it wasn't. I'm just saying there were some glitches.
We got it going. So following Dr. Walsh, Mr. Slezak and I had the opportunity to work with the teachers in a session called Teacher as Designer. Mr. Slezak is not here this evening, but I want to really give him a shout out for, he brings a lot more to the district than just instructional expertise. He is an incredible instructional leader and an expert in human-centered design. So him and I collaborated to bring this session to the teachers called "The Design Process." And in this session, we tried to walk them through the design process and design thinking. And embedded in the design process are all the critical skills that you need in the future workforce, things like ideating, building prototypes, refining your ideas, testing them out. So we walked through that, and we talked about how that process is useful when you are planning instruction, when you're designing your classroom, when you are setting the culture or the tone in your classroom. You really want to go through that iterative process and know that it's not always, it's not just done. You want to keep reflecting and really empowering the students as co-designers in that space to make the decisions around those things. And so we wanted to put them in the experience as a designer. So in the afternoon, sorry, in the morning, we had them following this session do a design challenge called "The Many Hats of Teaching." And we asked the teachers, they were in groups, they were assigned randomly, so they were mixtures of grade levels, content areas, randomly mixed, and they had to either design a hat that could sketch it or build it that makes teaching more engaging or more efficient. The department facilitators were fantastic of walking the teachers through that design process, empathizing, what are the problems that teachers are trying to solve? How do we define that problem? How can we help that problem? What can we build? Here is one of our fantastic designs. They all uploaded their designs. They were all in. They were just like the kids. They were stealing the supplies, taking it back to their classrooms. They were very engaged, and it was nice to see them collaborating and working together and working with people that they don't get to work with every day. And we did use a tool called Wakelet. It's a digital curation tool. And so each facilitator uploaded their team's design. So we now have a gallery that we shared out today where everybody could see each other's designs. And we really were impressed with the creativity among the staff. I want to give a big shout out to Stacy Klosick. She's our administrative assistant. A lot of work behind the scenes to prepare for this design challenge, making mobile maker carts. Every teacher got a clipboard with bullet journal paper so that they could sketch the design of the hat, start thinking about their classroom design and sketching that. She and I worked all summer to collect recyclables for the design challenge and central office. Everyone donated hats. So we had a really nice collection of hats for the teachers to use for those that built it. And I also want to take a moment. A lot of behind-the-scenes work happens with the instructional cabinet. That is Dr. Walsh, myself, Ms. Wells, Dr. Jan Sante, Dr. Minch, Dr. Shu, Mr. Slezak, Mr. Linozki. And we meet monthly. We were meeting more than monthly, really trying to get this curriculum mapping process off the ground. And so that started in June, and it had a lot of thoughtful work over the summer to, you know, we can successfully say at the end of yesterday that every teacher has their accountant atlas. Every teacher has the course that they're developing. Everyone had the opportunity to start exploring in that system. And we decided to, traditionally, Bethel Park had a paper binder curriculum guide, and we were able to convert with all new information, all of the resources that we have been sharing with the staff along the way. There's a homepage that teachers can find information about the strategic plan, different presentations that have been given pertaining to that. There's a tab about understanding by design, where they can find resources to support them in each of the stages. There's a tab dedicated to universal design for learning, something we're also really trying to keep that focus on the framework. Tools that are specific to navigating Atlas, and also a tab that we're referring to as "What Works," and really trying to, along the way, curate best practices and research that we know can guide them in making good instructional decisions. So we really just want to say thank you to all the people that are behind the scenes, helping to make sure that we get off to a successful start.
Thank you very much. And I ask to jump back in if I could at the personnel section.
Yes. Sorry, lost my spot here. Yeah. So next topic is public comments on agenda items. So if anybody has any comments for things that appear on this agenda, you're welcome to come up. You have two minutes. Any comments related to things off the agenda, please wait till the end of the meeting.
I have a question. I still write it in here, but on the agenda, are you ready voting that children that don't do well on their PSAs cannot take a foreign language class?
It's a motion in the consent agenda. It'll be number...
Seven.
Number seven. Thank you. Seven.
Yeah.
Ma'am, if you could use the microphone in front of you and then state your name and address, and then you have two minutes to give your comments.
Lauren Moore, and 753 Marvel Valley Drive, Bethel Park, PA. I have a daughter who is dyslexic, so she gets reading support. Very smart girl, very capable, but she does get reading support. And going into sixth grade, she was super excited to take foreign language. And I get her schedule, and it's not on there. So I call, thinking it was a mistake, and she said, they told me no, because she did not perform well on her PSAs, that she can't take it. And I said, well, I think that's wrong, because she should be off, just because she has a disability, she should be able to take that class. And part of the reason was foreign language is offered the same time as reading support. So they did work with me. We got her in foreign language, and she pulled As in all the foreign languages. So pardon me. She is very smart, but standardized tests will never be something that can tell what she's capable of or what her knowledge is. And kids with disabilities should not have to pick between getting reading help and taking a class that everybody else has to take. I just want to read an excerpt from the Disabilities Discrimination Laws, Section 504. It states that "This prohibits discrimination based on disability in any program or activity operated by recipients of federal funds." And examples of the types of discrimination... And examples of the types of discrimination prohibited include inequitable access to education programs, facilities, denial of free, appropriate public education for elementary and secondary students, and refusal to implement or implementation of academic adjustments in higher education." And I feel like this proposal is in direct violation of that. Part of this is a scheduling problem. They don't have to adjust the schedule another time period to put it in. So I think more time periods should be offered. And also a timing issue, there's only so much time in the day. And if that's the case, then the IEP teams, the parents, and the students should decide what is left off their schedule. And they should not be punished because they don't do well on standardized tests. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to connect. Click Connect to show now. You are connected as the host. Welcome, host. You are now in the host room and can manage your callers from the calling studio web interface.
Any comments from this room? No? Do we have any callers?
There are no callers.
Okay. Moving on to the business items, Mrs. Janisak, can you take the consent agenda, please?
Sure. The consent agenda tonight has 12 items on it. Would anyone like any of those items held out?
I'd like number seven held out.
Holding out number seven. Any other comment, items held out? All right. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the following items.
Can, if we're holding seven out, Mrs. Turner made the motion, do we have a second on-
Oh, second.
Amendment. Mr. Scalzo.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't know we normally had a second on holding things out. I thought that was just a request. And then we'd vote on them separately afterwards.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
All right. So on the consent agenda tonight, we have number one, pre-K Counts Grant for 2022, 2023. The 2223 Title I, Title II, Non-Public School Services. July 2002 and August 2002 salaries and bills. June 2002, I'm sorry, 22. Financial Report, July 2022 Financial Report. Approval of Cross-District Agreement for Special Education. Approval of Policy Final Reading. Approval of the Annual Evaluation of the Superintendent. Approval of the Annual Evaluation of the Assistant Superintendent for Administration. Approval of the Emergency Instructional Time Template. And Approval of Consent Agenda. So I move items one through six and seven through 12.
Eight through 12.
Oh, eight, yes, eight through 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Janisak, and seconded by Mr. Grisbeck.
Mr. Christensen, I move to table number seven and ask that administration relook at that policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Turner, seconded by Mr. Scalzo.
I can't call that up electronically either, I have to roll call, we're all in favor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'm sorry, the person in the audience just spoke, just for clarification, that was the, we had other comments on that also, we tabled that. And some of the discussion we had previously is that there's still a need, you know, to identify students who need that extra help because it only gets worse as they go through subsequent grades. But I think what we were thinking about in some previous discussions is it has to be more than just PSSA scores as the identification, so.
Yeah, or, you know, like my daughter, she's borderline, but it's in our IP, she needs that reading support.
Sure.
She can't not have it, but she should be able to take those classes too.
Yeah.
Right. And the main policy group is exactly what you had asked for in the IEP, in the 504, in a parent conference, to include Dr. Schu and Dr. Minch and have that conversation.
Yeah, and it should be true, because there's only so much time in the day, so.
Right.
It's not a thing to have to go, but I feel like it should be a discussion.
Okay. Thank you for speaking. I just want to call it out because we have all these numbers that we're calling out. I just wanted to clarify that that's the one that we tabled, so. Mrs. Scalzo, can you take the Curriculum Committee?
Okay. Under Curriculum Committee, we have three items. We will start off with the first item as a discussion only. It's, it's a non-voting item. It is the 2022-2023 Testing Schedule. So if I can hand that over to one of our curriculum coordinators to maybe elaborate on what that is.
What this is, is this is just a one-page document of the tests that we offer here at Bethel Park that are a district offering. So the first test is the Dibbles Test. This is a grades K through 2 test. This test is done by either the reading specialist, the IST teacher, or the classroom teachers of those grades. It depends on the school buildings. It's done within the five elementary schools. They schedule it independently on a time that works good for them at the beginning of the year. It is a universal screener, and so it looks at the students' initial sounds, their phoning, blending, or segmentation, nonsense words, and it is used to identify students that might need extra reading supports. And then they will receive those services. The MAP test, this is our measure of academic progress. This is NWE MAP Growth. Last year was the first year we gave this test. This is a K to A assessment. It is given in math and ELA. It is done three times a year for students in grades one through eight. We do not do this in the fall with our kindergarten students. We utilize that time to work on getting them used to being in school and we don't want to put them on a test. This is an adaptive test. It is given three times a year. And then we have the In-View Exam. This is given as a screening test in grades two and six. This is administered in November, and this is a requirement, I believe, Mr. Minch, this is part of Chapter 15 requirement as a screener for students. So all students in grades two and six will take this test. And then I'm going to pass it along.
Could you define in simpler terms what adaptive test means?
For the MAP?
And what Chapter 15 is?
I will define the MAP and then I'm going to pass it over for Chapter 15, for the Special Education Department. The adaptive test on the MAP, it is a test that when you, based on your percentage of answers correct, it moves. So if you are in third grade, you will start off with what is typical PA core third grade questions. And then as you answer questions correctly, the questions get more difficult in caliber in terms of grade level information. And so then the reporting we get for each student looks at the anchors of the Pennsylvania standards. And so then teachers receive a report for each student knowing strengths and weaknesses in those standard areas, and then how best to help instruct students where they actually are during that time period. So it's not summative that it's taken at the end of the year. We do this three times a year so that we can monitor what the students are learning and how they're growing.
And for my part in it, Chapter 15 for Service Agreements, other people might use the term 504 Service Agreements. That's all the legislation that goes behind protection of students with disabilities that don't have an IEP but have some, a disability that substantially affects their progress at school. I'm sorry. You said chap, I'm sorry, the In-View Testing we're talking about right now, apologize. Skip. So In-View Testing, yes, for gifted, Chapter 16, someone said, yeah, someone, yeah, that got me off there, sorry. So Chapter 16 for the gifted students. So part of our obligations for gifted education is what's called Child Find. So Child Find is a process by which the district has to have in place measures to find students within their boundaries that qualify for gifted education. And so some are part of the screening system for that is the In-View Testing that happens with, the In-View Testing where we look at students whose IQ scores would be above a certain mark as possibility candidates for gifted education. And at that point, we go into a screening mode of additional data points and then move that forward to the school psychologist. And we do that in second and sixth grade. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. What you wanted to know?
Regarding the PSSAs, these are summative assessments that are given to students at the end of the year in grades three through eight. PSSA is taken in English Language Arts and also in Mathematics in grades three through eight. Our students in grades four and eight also are assessed up in Science. And this is a federal regulation that we have to follow. Students need to be assessed in those three areas and in those intervals. And again, those are a summative test given once a year, and they are based on the standards that the teachers are teaching throughout the school year. And the keystones are just a little bit different. They are not taken at a particular grade level. They're taken at the completion of that course. So for example, the Keystone Algebra Exam is taken at the conclusion of an algebra course. So a student who's taking algebra in eighth grade would take the Algebra Keystone in eighth grade at the conclusion of that course. Some students take algebra in ninth grade or 10th grade. They would take that Keystone Exam at the end of that course. The same applies for Biology. Literature is, is a little more consistent. It is taken at grade 10. Biology is typically taken at grade nine with, with some variation, but not as much variation as the algebra. And at times, students do take those exams, they can take those again and try to improve their score because they're, they can, they need the score to graduate, beginning with this year's class under Act 158. It is a part of their graduation pathway. So at times, students, we would recommend, they're not required, but we recommend, do you, one of the pathways is, involves passing those exams, that students can have another shot at them to try to improve their composite score. So that is the difference between the PSSA in grades three through eight and the algebra, which could begin as early as seventh grade if a student were taking algebra in the seventh grade.
Thank you for that information. Oh, you have more?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that information. Are there any questions from any other board members? Okay, moving on to voting items, two and three. Looking at number two, Professional Development. Item A, Dr. Zeb Jan Santi to attend the 2022 School Safety Summit at the Sheraton-Harrisburg Hershey Hotel in Harrisburg, PA on November 1st, 2022, and November 2nd, 2022, at the total cost of $762.56. Item B, Sharon Janisak to attend the PASA, PSBA School Leadership Conference at the Kalahari Resorts in Poconos Manor, PA on October 30th, 2022, through November 2nd, 2022, at a total cost of $1,299.64. And item three, we have our Community College of Beaver County Updated Memorandum of Agreement for Dual Enrollment. I would like to move items two and three.
Second.
So move by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Mr. Grisbeck.
Voting, I think voting's open, hold on. Voting is open.
Thank you. Mr. Modrick, can you take the items under Personnel Committee since Mr. McGregor's not here?
Yes, sir. Tonight, for Personnel Committee, we have a total of 13 items. Approval of Extra Duty, Acceptance of Resignation, Approval of Staff Changes, Change of Assignment, Appointment of Personnel, Approval of Unpaid Leave of Absence, Approval of Mentors, Memo, MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, Another Memorandum of Understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, A Memorandum of Understanding with the Bethel Park Paraprofessionals and AIDS Educational Support Unit, Approval of the 2022-2023 Salaries for a Non-Act 93 Group, Approval of a Resolution Regarding an Employee, and Changes to Extracurricular Pay Schedule Current Positions. If there's no exceptions, anybody want anything held out? If not, then I move all 13 items.
Second.
Mr. Scalzo. Dr. Walsh, did you have some comments on a couple of these items?
Well, I, two, actually. And joining us tonight is, on the agenda, our new lacrosse coach, Luke, is sitting out there. And I got a chance to sit with Luke and talk both about lacrosse and also about his, you know, passion for students in Bethel Park and success. And so he's a great addition to our leadership role here in the district. Of course, he was coaching defensively last year, so he's not new to Bethel Park or to the team. But bringing that expertise from Seton Hill to Bethel Park, we're glad to have him as a coach, wanted to make sure the board knew he was sitting there. And also to publicly apologize to one of our new teachers who, on my induction presentation, misspelled her name, called her Brooke and she's Blair. So with all apologies to Blair Hunter, who you saw one of her pictures in the bright spots there a little bit earlier, we're glad she's a part of our team in second grade at Lincoln. So my apologies to Brooke Blair.
Thank you.
Voting is open.
Real quick on here, Mr. Christensen, listed under Volunteers for a Football Assistant Volunteer Coach is our Assistant Superintendent.
Yeah, I don't have enough to do, thank you.
We thank you for dedicating more hours, okay? So Finance Committee, Mr. Grisbeck, can you take that?
Yes, I can. Under Finance Committee tonight, we have nine items. Item number one, the Acceptance of the Whole Kids Foundation Garden Grant. Item number two, Fund Balance Commitment. Item number three, Approval of Student Services Contracts. Item number four, Sale of a District Vehicle. Item number five, Approval of Steel Center Joint Board Resolution. Item number six, Participating District Resolution in Connection with Capital Project. Item number seven, Appointment of Steel Valley Area School Authority Member. Item number eight, Payment for the New Elementary School Project. And item number nine, Resolution, Donation of Property. I would like item number seven held out. Does anyone want any other items held out or have any other questions? I did have a comment on item number one. So, item number one is the Acceptance of the Whole Kids Foundation Garden Grant. So for that item, that was Neil Armstrong that was selected for a $3,000 garden grant. Our application was selected from over 1,200 applications received from across the US and Canada. Dr. Walsh, could you let us know a little more that, about that and who applied for that?
Mrs. Figlioli.
It was Mr. Espinar. I collaborated with Mr. Espinar. It was his vision for the project. He, the project began as he was collaborating with All Pro Plumbing. They built a, an aqua, a hydroponics unit in a locker that was no longer being used. And he was creating, they were growing lettuce, and they had a bigger vision for the project, and they wanted things that are called tower gardens. And so the tower garden, again, it only uses water, the seedlings, they go in, oh, I forget what the name of it's called, but you don't use any soil, it's all water. But the tower gardens are these, they grow vertically, and so we will be able to really multiply our supply of lettuce. And his vision for the project was that the lettuce would be served in the cafeteria. And Metz, our food service group, is a partner with us on the project. And so they will be doing different tastings with salads. He was going to work with students in his health class about different ways you can prepare salads, different salad dressings that you can make. So really, it has gone from a very small project in a locker for three, and now for $3,000 to be able to purchase, to, to tower gardens that will really multiply our harvests of lettuce. So I want to compliment him. He was the vision behind this project. We teamed up on the logistics, but this is something that was really, I don't think grassroots is the word, locker roots. But it truly was. It was, the kids responded so well to it. They really, if anyone had the opportunity to see the students talk about the project, it was phenomenal. So I'm really excited to see this project grow across the district.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Figlioli, let me, let me clarify something. We were growing- Mrs. Figlioli, let me, let me clarify something. We were growing lettuce out of an old locker, but it was very good. Mr. Espinar did like spot clean it. It was not.
Dressing, he uses all natural sources of protein. It was a learning experience for all of us. And we're partnering with the Create Lab at Carnegie Mellon, and we're trying to incorporate it with a data fluency project because what came out of the project was, were curiosities about how things were growing, what made them grow more, what could make them grow less. They wanted to look at different things within the environment that could make growth better and it could hinder growth. So it's a really small seed that I am super excited about. Mr. Slezak has also wandered into the project, so we're really excited about where this project's going to go.
Well, thank you very much.
Right, but I just wanted to inform everybody, this is like, I was amazed at how well this tasted, how much these kids knew about this project, the whole thing. So to get more money and to get it as a grant to continue this and see where this can grow to, is the best word to use, is phenomenal.
Yeah, and compliments to Mr. Espinar because it really is student-driven. It came from their curiosity about why we can't, why we live in an area that we can't have gardens in the winter, and it started from there. So compliments to a great teacher who was willing to take the vision of the students and carry it through.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you to Mr. Espinar and Mr. Oaks at All Pro Plumbing, as well as Mets for helping out as well. That sounds like an awesome team achievement, yeah. I also had a question on item number four, the sale of a district vehicle. It was, I guess it just struck me that we were selling, I guess, it does say dispose of an old Ford F-450 for $1,000, but I just wanted to make sure that we were indeed scrapping that and it wasn't being sold for $1,000.
It's actually, I believe we're getting a minimum amount, like $1,000. It's really just being for some spare parts. It's really not a vehicle that runs.
Just wanted to double check that we weren't selling an operable Ford F-450.
No, it is not a running vehicle.
In that case, I move to approve items number one through six, as well as items eight and nine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scalzo, if you didn't hear it.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion that item seven, we approve the appointment of Gail Hoppy to the Steel Valley School Authority Board.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Turner, second.
Voting is open. I, hold on. Voting is open. Yes, she can vote. Motion carries.
All right, that is all we have for Finance Committee tonight.
Thank you. And to Policy Committee, Ms. Turner, there's two items. Can you take those? Looks like we don't vote on any of them, but.
No, we have nothing coming tonight. The Approval of Policy 816, the district's social media policy, and then revision to Policy 618, the Student Activities Fund. Dr. Walsh, can you explain the change that's going to happen? And I know it has to do with how we end the year.
Yes, correct. So it's just a one additional statement in Policy 617 that directs unclaimed funds after a student graduates that are unclaimed would go to the student government account for their use, or the general fund for the principal's use.
Right. So if there's any students didn't spend it, they raised more money than they needed. It goes to everyone after upon graduation?
Yeah, and they don't claim it.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, questions on those two policies? Okay, good. Next topic is public comments on anything related to the school. Two minutes is the timeframe again. If you have questions, please come to the mic here.
My name is Valerie Johnston. I live at 5801 Wallace Avenue. Thank you for everything you do, by the way. I was just, I have some questions about the new elementary center that you're planning on erecting. How many students would be enrolled there, approximately?
1,700.
Pardon me?
1,700.
Okay. I have just a couple concerns. One gym for all of those students doesn't seem adequate to me. Also, has a traffic study been done on King School Road? Because there's going to be quite a bit of traffic on that narrow.
Yeah, we will. It's, you know, we're what, about a year away from breaking ground on anything. There's, there's all kinds of soil sample traffic studies that just, it's still early in the design phase, but a lot of those questions will have to be studied and addressed, yes.
Okay. Also, the remaining buildings, I'm sure you haven't decided what you're doing with those yet, but I would really love it if we don't have another housing plan. We have enough people here. We're all good. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe there's, there's actually two gyms in that building design.
Oh, okay. I was at the meeting prior to this, when the architects were here, and there was only one gym shown on.
Yeah, on the, on the second floor, there's one, and down on the first floor, there's one.
Because I'm concerned, yeah, kids.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody here?
Good evening, everyone. Christina Headley, 5881 Irish Town Road. I just want to compliment you guys so much on being able to electronically make the forms. That is amazing to not have to fill out that. Oh, thank you. And it's exciting to hear all the new stuff for the staff.
Do we have any call-ins?
No call-ins.
No? Any other comments? Any board comments?
I'd like to wish everyone and all of your children a really happy first day of school. In a couple of days, I think we're off to a great start, and I'm really excited about the school year.
Agreed. Yeah, welcome to all of our new, you know, teachers, faculty, staff, all of our new students and returning students. And thank you to all of our administration here, as well as all of our teachers and staff that are putting in the hard work to, you know, get this year started on a good foot.
I want to wish everybody a very, very happy school year. I also want to say congratulations to Sean Rover, who's an awesome kid and neighbor and friend. He does great work with smiles from Sean. And I'm very excited that we're getting the Unified Indoor Bocce Team, and we got to the top of the waiting list for that. And Mr. Cromie mentioned it, and he's absolutely right. In districts that have unified sports teams, the amount of participation, of school spirit, of acceptance and inclusion, and truly joining together in celebration of a sport, it's amazing. It's really a beautiful whole-school experience. So I'm urging everyone out there, apply to be on the team, go to the matches and the games, go to the pep rallies, do the things, because we are all, all of us are Bethel Park. And thank you so much to the administration staff for all of the wonderful things that you did in preparation for the school year, and all of those engaging, exciting activities with the team bonding and getting everybody together and really bringing that spirit of Bethel Park to all of our staff, and that spreads to all of our students, because we are all in this together. So awesome, awesome job. Very excited to see how the year goes. And please hound me every Monday and Thursday till I get my registration done. Thank you so much.
I do want to wish everybody a happy, healthy, safe, and fun 2022, 2023 school year, as I told everybody on Monday morning at 8:15. Looking forward to this school year. And there is one thing I want to ask, and it's more of an administration. Whatever we're going to call it, we're back, and we're back in force, and we have the kids in the classrooms. And on Friday, I would really encourage everybody in the district to show their Hawk spirit. So on Fridays, I would really like it if everybody, you don't have to wear your Ben Franklin shirt, or your Memorial shirt, or your Washington shirt, or your Penn shirt, but if you have it, wear it. If not, just wear something that's orange or black. Put your kid in an orange shirt. Put your kid in a black shirt. All the football players wear their football jerseys. All the cheerleaders, all the Bethettes, all the majorettes, everybody wears their orange at that school that day. I think we just need to do it district-wide. And then I would hope that Mr. Cromie gets out there to take those pictures of all those smiling faces and all their black and orange. Show the Black Hawk pride. And the other thing that we all did, most of us, some of us, some of them still don't know it, is sang our alma mater on Monday morning. I would really encourage our music staff out there to get those little kids in that elementary school to learn this alma mater. It's not hard. I'm not asking it to be sung in key either, but let's show our Bethel Park spirit this year. Let's get back to Bethel Park and Bethel Park spirit on Fridays. It's a challenge. Thanks, guys.
Any other comments? No? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Aye. Adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Nice turnout at the.